Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Good evening and thank you for participating in the public hearing tonight. My name is Nicole Ernest with the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protections, Division of Air Quality. Welcome to the public hearings for the Division of Air Quality's 12 Proposed Rules for the upcoming 2024 West Virginia Legislative Session. There will be a separate public hearing for each of the 12 DAQ Proposed Rules. The hearings will be held sequentially and will commence immediately following the conclusion of the hearing for the previous proposed rule. With me this evening, also from the Division of Air Quality, are Sandra Atkins and Laura Jennings. A court reporter is also in attendance this evening. The purpose of each public hearing is to receive public comments on the record regarding each of the proposed DAQ rules. DAQ is limiting public comments to the proposed revisions to the rules and is not soliciting comments not related to the proposed revisions. Each public hearing is being recorded and a court reporter is in attendance to meet Clean Air Act requirements and to consider comments during the rulemaking process. Because the purpose of the public hearing is to listen to your comments, it is not a form to engage the DAQ in open discussion or debate about proposed rules. Unlike a public meeting, the DAQ will not be responding to questions during the hearing. All comments received will be addressed in a response to comment document that will be part of the official rulemaking record made available on the Secretary of State's website. All participants have been muted upon entry into the meeting to ensure we are not interrupting others or talking over one another. Participants were asked to preregister to speak and will be called upon when it's your turn to speak. When called upon, you will unmute and you will be told to go ahead with your comment. Please clearly state your name and indicate if you are representing any group or organization. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Please specify when your comment is finished so we can re-mute you. If you did not preregister as a speaker but would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature in Google Meets. As a reminder, video demonstrations and screen sharing by witnesses is not permitted. The chat feature in Google Meets will be monitored during the public hearing to assist with any technical issues. We ask that everyone be respectful and considerate of each other by refraining from using foul language, refraining from name-calling, refraining from interrupting others while they are speaking, and keeping comments on topic of the proposed DAQ rule. I'm now turning this over to Laura Jennings with the Division of Air Quality. Laura?
Thanks, Nicole. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. And is the court reporter ready?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. The virtual public hearing for the proposed legislative rule 45 CSR1, Alternative Emission Limitation During Startup and Shutdown Operations, will now come to order on the sixth day of July 2023. Oral comments and testimony will be accepted until the close of this hearing and will be made part of the rulemaking record. Any questions regarding revisions to the rules should be included with your comments and any such questions will be addressed as part of the response to comments in the rulemaking record. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept comments on proposed revisions to Rule 1. Promulgated last in the 2017 session, this rule sets forth the criteria and permit application requirements for establishing an alternative emission limitation during periods of startup or shutdown. Substantive changes to the rule include removing malfunction from the rule title, clarifying the scope, removing maintenance activities from rule applicability, removing 45 CSR40 from applicability because the affirmative defense provisions identified in the SSM SIP call were previously addressed, aligning several definitions with the definitions in the SSM SIP call, removing maintenance definitions and requirements, making the requirements mandatory if a source cannot comply with the applicable emission limits contained in the underlying rules during startup or shutdown, requiring the secretary to submit any new AEL, Alternative Emission Limitations, to the administrator for inclusion into the SIP, allowing the secretary to develop an AEL for a narrowly defined source category and miscellaneous other clarifications. Rule numbering and text formats were revised to comport with 153 CSR1. The floor is now open for comments. As a reminder, please keep comments on topic and limit them to five minutes. Nicole, has anyone preregistered to provide comments on proposed Rule 45 CSR1? If so, please unmute their line and call upon them now.
Thanks, Laura. For those who have preregistered to speak, I will call your name and you will unmute your line. If you are joining us by telephone, please unmute your line by pressing star six when your name is called and press star six again at the conclusion of your comment to re-mute your line. If we do not hear from you when called upon, we'll proceed to the next commenter and call on you again at the end. I apologize in advance if I pronounce anyone's name incorrectly. James Kotkin, you're the first, please unmute your line. Clearly state your name and indicate if you are representing a group or organization.
My name is Jim Kotzen. I am currently Chair of the West Virginia Chapter of Sierra Club. In particular, with regard to this rule, I very much appreciate the efforts that DEP has made to implement those. We have long had concerns about the SSM exemptions from many of the emissions monitoring and reporting requirements. This rule is definitely a major step forward in the right direction. I have three specific comments that I want to emphasize. The first is that the revisions in the rule do not clearly address how emissions during malfunctions would be handled. The implication is that any excess emissions during malfunctions would be included as part of the overall emissions. But we think that that should be stated very explicitly because that is a change from previous DEP practices. The second suggestion is regarding Section 3.2.3 that requires the secretary to submit these alternative emissions limits as a SIP revision. That is a provision that the Sierra Club has supported and we commend DEP for including that in this rule. We think that's an important addition. Finally, the rule, especially in Section 4.1, requires an owner or operator to apply for an alternative emission limit if they cannot comply with the limits required in other rules. There is, however, nothing in that rule that requires an owner or operator to adopt the lowest achievable or best available emissions controls, only that they apply for a limit and describe the control strategies that they have reviewed and proposed. We'd recommend that that section or Section 5.15 be amended to specifically base an alternative emissions limit on the lowest achievable or best available technology as appropriate for that particular area. We think it is critical that these permits be designed to allow the lowest practically achievable emissions limits, that any pollution that is avoidable should be avoided, and that as such, these alternative emissions limits should require the best technology and the best possible emissions rates. Thank you.
Thank you, James. We are at the end of the registered commenters list. If you did not preregister to speak but would like to do so now, please use the raised hand option. Dwayne Nichols, please unmute yourself and begin your comment.
Thank you very much. I want to pre-comment on this by saying that this hearing is very useful and appreciate this opportunity to speak. We have an opportunity to learn so much from public hearings that they play a vital role in the regulatory process. However, because of that learning, we need the opportunity to submit comments, to revise our comments or extend them immediately after a public hearing. So in that regard, it's essential that this and other public hearings be made available the period for written comments open for two to three days after the scheduled public hearing. Thank you for receiving that comment. With regards to this particular alternative emission limitations category, startup and shutdown are indeed important times in industrial operations, in the power plants, and other facilities that involve emissions. We believe that tight control on startup particularly is important because most processes are not actually developed in the laboratory, in the pilot plant, or in the demonstration phase to adequately provide environmentally safe performance. So attention to the limits. When we say that we're going to change the startup and shutdown limits, it needs to mean that we're going to heighten them, that we're going to be more well-defined in our expectations so that the engineers, the owners, the operators of facilities know what is expected of them. With regards to malfunctions, this calls to mind the operations that are deviating from some prescribed or expected operation. And thereto, the control system design, the training, preparation of the operators, the skill set, the number of procedures that the company have already defined to respond to or recover from non-standard operation depends upon this agency providing well-defined strict regulations. These are my comments on this category and thank you for that.
Thank you, Dwayne. Betsy, I see that your hand is raised. Unmute yourself. Please state if you're with any organization and go ahead with your comment.
My name is Betsy Lawson. I live about a mile away from a new fracking well site and emission limitations are meaningless if there aren't inspectors around to inspect when they start up and when they shut down. And I just wonder if the DEP will have enough inspectors to go around to all these different sites and make sure that the limitations are being respected. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Betsy. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Please use the raise hand feature. There being no farther comments, this public hearing for proposed Rule 45 CSR1 is concluded. The public hearing for proposed Rule 45 CSR2 will begin momentarily.
Thank you, Nicole. Is the court reporter ready for the next public hearing?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, thank you. The virtual public hearing for the proposed legislative rule 45 CSR2, Control of Particulate Matter Air Pollution From the Combustion of Fuel in Indirect Heat Exchangers, will now come to order on the sixth day of July 2023. Oral comments and testimony will be accepted until the close of this hearing and will be made part of the rulemaking record. Any questions regarding revisions to the rules should be included with your comments and any such questions will be addressed as part of the response to comments in the rulemaking record. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept comments on proposed revisions to Rule 2. Promulgated last in 2000 session, this rule establishes emission limits for smoke and particulate matter which are discharged from fuel burning units and sets forth the registration, permitting, testing, monitoring, record-keeping, reporting, and exemption requirements. The rule is being amended in response to the US EPA finding a failure to submit action to address deficiencies identified in the EPA 2015 findings of substantial inadequacy in SIP call for provisions related to excess emissions during periods of startup, shutdown, and malfunction, or SSM. Revision to the rule include removing the SSM SIP call provisions from subsections 9.1, 9.4, 10.1, and 10.2. Additional revisions include updating the title and series name, clarifying the scope and authority, adding the sunset provision, and removing the former rules section. Adding or revising the definition section consistent with the SSM SIP call or with other DAQ rules, replacing director with secretary, adding references to state rules associated with federal regulations, removing obsolete language, and adding a provision in subsection 9.6 requiring any owner or operator that cannot comply with the emission limits of this rule during periods of startup and shutdown to request an alternative emission limitation pursuant to 45 CSR1. The appendix was updated to clarify the scope, update the rule name, and add numbering as needed. Rule numbering and text formats were revised to comport with 153 CSR1. The floor is now open for comments. As a reminder, please keep your comments on topic and limit them to five minutes. Nicole, has anyone preregistered to provide comments on proposed Rule 2? If so, please unmute their line and call upon them now.
There are no registered commenters. If you did not preregister to speak but would like to do so now, please use the raise hand option. Dwayne, go ahead and unmute yourself and begin your comment.
Thank you. As we, maybe most of us realize, a particulate matter is one of the most pernicious of the air pollutants because, as we now know, although it's not sufficiently documented and used within the regulatory agency, the fine particulate matter and the ultra-fine matter has the ability to penetrate the lungs, to enter the bloodstream, to affect the heart, the lungs, and the brain, believe it or not. And this information needs to be foremost in the minds and on the desk of regulators. With regards to the position brought forward here by the US EPA, my organization, the Mon Valley Clean Air Coalition, supports the EPA in this position. And we do, however, believe that if a given process cannot meet the startup or shutdown limitations, that they should be granted alternatives. It is not necessarily a wise approach. There are processes for which alternatives should not be granted. And such situations need to be understood as possible and therefore, from time to time, we should see from this agency and other regulatory agencies that some processes are simply denied permits because they cannot meet rational expectations in the limitations. Thank you. That concludes my comment.
Thank you, Dwayne. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a comment? Please use the raise hand feature. There being no farther comments, this public hearing for proposed Rule 45 CSR2 is concluded. The public hearing for proposed Rule 45 CSR3 will begin momentarily.
Thank you, Nicole. Is the court reporter ready for the next hearing?
Yes, I'm ready.
Thank you. The virtual public hearing for the proposed legislative rule 45 CSR3, Control of Air Pollution From the Operation of Hot Mix Asphalt Plants, will now come to order on the sixth day of July 2023. Oral comments and testimony will be accepted until the close of this hearing and will be made part of the rulemaking record. Any question regarding revisions to the rules should be included with your comments and any such questions, excuse me, will be addressed as part of the response to comments in the rulemaking record. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept comments on proposed revisions to Rule 3, Control of Air Pollution From the Operation of Hot Mix Asphalt Plants, which was last promulgated in the 2000 session. This rule establishes emission limitations for hot mix asphalt plants and the plant property and sets forth the permitting, record-keeping, reporting, and exemption requirements. The rule is being amended in response to the US EPA finding a failure to submit action to address deficiencies identified in the US EPA 2015 findings of substantial inadequacy in SIP call for provisions related to excess emissions during periods of startup, shutdown, and malfunction. Revisions to the rule include removing the SSM provisions in subsections 3.2 and 7.1. Additional revisions include updating the title and series name, clarifying the scope and authority, adding the sunset provision, adding or revising the definition section consistent with the SSM SIP call or with other DAQ rules, replacing director with secretary, adding references to state rules associated with federal regulations, and adding a provision in subsection 3.3 requiring any owner or operator that cannot comply with the emission limits of this rule during periods of startup and shutdown to request an alternative emission limitation pursuant to 45 CSR1. The rule numbering and text formats were revised to comport with 153 CSR1. The floor is now open for comments. As a reminder, please keep your comments on topic and limit them to five minutes. Nicole, has anyone preregistered to provide comments on proposed Rule 3? If so, please unmute their line and call on them now.
Thanks, Laura. For those who have preregistered to speak, I will call your name. Please unmute your line. Patrick Ward, you're the first registered. Please unmute your line. Please state clearly your name and indicate if you are representing any group or organization.
My name is Patrick Ward. I'm not representing any group or organization right now and I have no comments. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We are at the end of our registered commenters. If you did not preregister to speak but would like to do so, please use the raise hand option. There being nothing farther, the public hearing for proposed Rule 45 CSR3 is concluded. The public hearing for proposed Rule 45 CSR5 will begin momentarily.
Thank you, Nicole. Is the court reporter ready for the next hearing?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, thank you. The virtual public hearing for the proposed Rule 45 CSR5, Control of Air Pollution From the Operation of Coal Preparation Plants, Coal Handling Operations, and Coal Refuge Disposal Areas, will now come to order on the sixth day of July 2023. will now come to order on the sixth day of July, twenty-twenty-three. Oral comments and testimony will be accepted until the close of this hearing and will be made part of the rulemaking record. Any question regarding revisions to the rules should be included with your comments, and any such comment will be addressed as part of the response to comments in the rulemaking record. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept comments on proposed revisions to rule five, which was last promulgated in the two thousand session. This rule establishes emission standards for particulate matter from the operation of coal preparation plants, coal handling operations, and coal refuse disposal areas, and sets forth permitting, monitoring, testing, record-keeping, and reporting requirements. The rule is being amended in response to the US EPA finding a failure to submit action to address deficiencies identified in the US EPA twenty-fifteen findings of substantial inadequacy and SIP call for provisions related to excess emissions during periods of startup, shutdown, and malfunction, or SSM. Revisions to the rule include removing the SSM SIP call provisions in subsection thirteen point one and the related provisions in subsections thirteen point two and thirteen point three. Additional revisions include updating the title and series name, clarifying the scope and authority, adding the sunset provision and removing the former rule sections, adding or revising the definition section consistent with the SSM SIP call or other DAQ rules, replacing director with secretary, adding references to state rules associated with federal regulations, removing obsolete language, correcting a reference in ten point one, and adding a provision in section fifteen requiring any owner or operator that cannot comply with the emission limits of this rule during periods of startup and shutdown to request an alternative emission limitation pursuant to forty-five CSR one. The rule numbering and text formats were revised to comport with one fifty-three CSR one. The floor is now open for comments. As a reminder, please keep your comments on topic and limit them to five minutes. Nicole, has anyone pre-registered to provide comments on proposed rule five? If so, please unmute their line and call on them now.
Thanks, Laura. For those who have pre-registered to speak, I will call your name. Please unmute your line. If we do not hear from you when called upon, we will proceed to the next commenter and call on you again at the end. I apologize in advance if I pronounce anyone's name incorrectly. I will call two names, the person who is commenting and the next commenter, so that they may get ready. The first is Jason Bostick. Next in line is Dwayne Nichols. Jason, please unmute your line. Clearly state your name and indicate if you are representing any group or organization.
Good evening. My name is Jason Bostick, and I am the Vice President of the West Virginia Coal Association. The West Virginia Coal Association represents the state's coal industry, and our members account for over eighty percent of the state's thermal and metallurgical coal production. Our coal-producing or general members, as we refer to them, maintain and operate coal preparation plants throughout the state, over eighty-one facilities that range from some of the largest, most complex preparation plants in the world to some of the most simple crushers with a single-feed conveyor belt. Our members have a sustan- substantial interest in the proposed revisions to forty-five CSR five. In addition to our general coal-producing members, the Coal Association represents its associate members ninety-eight percent of the state's in-state coal coal consumers, which could be impacted by the proposed revisions to forty-five CSR one and the other rules that propose similar changes to the startup, shutdown, and malfunction provisions of the rule. At the outset, the Association would like to compliment the efforts of the Division of Air Quality as it regards these changes. The Coal Association is acutely aware and appreciates the fact that these resi- revisions come from dialogue and program oversight with the Federal Environmental Protection Agency dating back to twenty-fifteen. And we would like to compliment DAQ for its efforts to maintain state privacy. However, because the changes are related to this extended discussion and administrative exchange with EPA, to our members, the changes are complex, and without the benefit of DAQ's institutional knowledge and experience, for some of our members, they are very difficult to understand. As we state in our written comments, we urge the Division of Air Quality to continue its outreach efforts with the regulated community generally and with the coal industry specifically as it regards this particular rule, so that we can fully understand the implications of the changes and work with the agency to assure first their approval by the legislature and then their effective implementation once they are passed, finalized, and approved by EPA. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Next is Dwayne, oh, sorry, Dwayne Nichols. Um, Dwayne, go ahead and unmute your mic. Please clearly state your name and indicate if you are representing any group or organization.
Thank you very much. My name is Dwayne Nichols, and I'm commenting here on number five. Uh, as listed, the operations are coal preparation plants, coal handling, and coal refuse. What I see conspicuously mi- missing from that list is coal storage. Uh, coal storage operations are extensive in size uh because a given power plant or a coal utilization facility um requires a substantial inventory uh to uh provide for the opportunity of continuous operation through a possible interruptions in the 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 railroading or or other supply process. Um, coal storage piles are notorious uh for the problem of spontaneous combustion. And while this uh it is rarely an open burning fire, uh it is indeed a a process of oxidation of the fine material in the pile uh that gives rise to uh various of the lists of of pollutants. You see, when a, when the raw coal it is actually undergoing combustion, then the sulfur and other possible uh n- non-carbon constituents um are volatilized. The heating in the pile gives rise to volatile matter into the air. And the handling of the pile uh gives rise to uh particulate matter. So uh we we see here that in addition to there being emissions from prep plants, from coal handling, and refuges, there are indeed uh equivalent potentials for uh the large storage piles themselves. Um, we commend the agency for addressing these problems and request that opportunity to extend comment will go beyond five o'clock today as two to three days are needed for the opportunity to be adequate, sufficient, and complete in the comments we have and the information we have to present and in the reply that we may well have uh to the other comments that are given. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Dwayne. We are at the end of registered commentators' list. If you did not pre-register to speak but would like to do so now, please use the raised hand option. There being nothing farther, this public hearing for proposed rule forty-five CSR five is concluded. The public hearing for proposed rule forty-five CSR six will begin momentarily.
Thank you, Nicole. Is the court reporter ready for the next hearing?
Yes, I'm ready.
Thank you. The virtual public hearing for the proposed legislative rule forty-five CSR six, Control of Air Pollution from Combustion of Refuse, will now come to order on the sixth day of July, twenty-twenty-three. Oral comments and testimony will be accepted until the close of this hearing and will be made part of the rulemaking record. Any question regarding revisions to the rules should be included with your comments, and any such question will be addressed as part of the response to comments in the rulemaking record. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept comments on proposed revisions to rule six, which was last promulgated in the two thousand and eight session. This rule establishes emission standards for particulate matter and requirements for activities involving incineration of refuse which are not subject to or exempted from regulation under a federal counterpart for specific combustion sources. This rule also prohibits with limited exception open burning and sets forth the registration, permitting, reporting, testing, emergency, natural disaster, and exemption provisions for activities involving the combustion of refuse and land-clearing debris. The rule is being amended in response to the US EPA finding a failure to submit action to address deficiencies identified in the US EPA twenty-fifteen findings of substantial inadequacy and SIP call for provisions related to excess emissions during periods of startup, shutdown, and malfunction, or SSM. Revisions to the rule include removing the SSM SIP call provisions in subsection eight point two. Additional revisions include adding the sunset provision and removing the former rule subsection, adding or revising the definition section consistent with the SSM SIP call or with other DAQ rules, replacing director with secretary, updating the table name consisted with the, consistent with the required format, adding references to state rules associated with federal regulations, and adding a provision in section nine requiring any owner or operator that cannot comply with the emission limits of this rule during periods of startup and shutdown to request an alternative emission limitation pursuant to forty-five CSR one. Rule numbering and text formats were revised to comport with one fifty-three CSR one. The floor is now open for comments. As a reminder, please keep your comments on topic and limit them to five minutes. Nicole, has anyone pre-registered to provide comments on proposed rule forty-five CSR six? If so, please unmute their line and call on them now.
Thanks, Laura. For those who have pre-registered to speak, I will call your name. Please unmute your line. If we do not hear from you when called upon, we will proceed to the next commenter and call on you again at the end. I apologize in advance if I pronounce anyone's name incorrectly. Dwayne Nichols, please unmute your line. Please state your name and indicate if you are representing any group or organization.
Thank you very much. My name is Dwayne Nichols, and I'm representing in this case the Mon Valley Clean Air Coalition. A group uh has been active for ten years and uh is concerned with all the various conditions of air pollution in the Mon Valley and beyond, particularly within the state of West Virginia. With regards to this particular category, combustion of refuse, there's a lot to say about uh this in general terms, but let me focus on uh the problem of of burning uh uh wa- wa- waste debris from forestry operations, uh waste debris from sawmills or even waste debris from y- yard work. Uh, wha- whether this is included in the rule at the present time, uh I I hark back to the problem where a neighbor was burning leaves every season. Raking the leaves, the yard full of trees, the the yard full of leaves in the fall, burning the leaves, breathing the smoke actually resulted in uh a crisis of health that contaminated the lungs and resulted in the death of that neighbor. So I tell you that if you examine the toxic condition of some of the fumes off of refuse combustion, uh it is some of the most deadly fumes that we experience in our state. And so the importance of this category and the importance of extending this category uh to include as best we can the various conditions of uh bu- burning uh the the various categories of things uh wh- when it is, there 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 are alternatives. Um, ma- many opportunities exist to accumulate leaves, to haul them away, to compact them. And uh we, as an organization, support a healthy environment free from the fumes of refuse combustion. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Dwayne. We are at the end of the registered commentators' list. If you did not pre-register to speak but would like to do so now, please use the raise hand option. There being nothing farther, this public hearing for the proposed rule forty-five CSR six is concluded. The public hearing for proposed rule forty-five CSR seven will begin momentarily.
Thank you, Nicole. Is the court reporter ready for the next hearing?
Yes, I'm ready.
Thank you. The virtual public hearing for the proposed legislative rule forty-five CSR seven, Control of Particulate Matter Air Pollution from Manufacturing Processes and Associated Operations will now come to order on the sixth day of July, twenty-twenty-three. Oral comments and testimony will be accepted until the close of this hearing and will be made part of the rulemaking record. Any question regarding revisions to the rules should be included with your comments, and any such question will be addressed as part of the response to comments in the rulemaking record. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept comments on proposed revisions to rule seven, which was last promulgated in the two thousand session. This rule establishes particulate matter emission standards for manufacturing processes and associated operations and sets forth permitting, testing, reporting, and exemption provisions. The rule is being amended in response to the US EPA finding a failure to submit action to address deficiencies identified in the US EPA twenty-fifteen findings of substantial inadequacy and SIP call for provisions related to excess emissions during periods of startup, shutdown, and malfunction. for provisions related to excess emissions during periods of startup shutdown and malfunction, or SSM. Revisions to the rule include removing the SSM SIP call provisions in subsections 9.1, 10.3, and 10.4. Additional revisions include updating the title and series name, clarifying the scope and authority, adding the sunset provision and removing the former rule section, adding or revising the definition section consistent with the SSM SIP call or with other DAQ rules, replacing director with secretary, removing obsolete language for existing by-product code production facilities in subsection 3.3, and adding a provision in Section 12 requiring any owner or operator that cannot comply with the emission limits of this rule during periods of startup and shutdown to request an alternative emission limitation pursuant to 45 CSR 1. The rule numbering and text formats were revised to comport with 153 CSR 1. The floor is now open for comments. As a reminder, please keep your comments on topic and limit them to five minutes. Nicole, has anyone pre-registered to provide comments on proposed Rule 45 CSR 7? If so, please unmute their line and call on them now.
There are no registered commenters. If you did not pre-register to speak but would like to do so now, please use the raise hand option. There being nothing farther, this public hearing for proposed Rule 45 CSR 7 is concluded. The public hearing for proposed Rule 45 CSR 8 will begin momentarily.
Thank you, Nicole. Is the court reporter ready for the next hearing?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. The virtual public hearing for the proposed legislative rule 45 CSR 8, Ambient Air Quality Standards, will now come to order on the 6th day of July 2023. Oral comments and testimony will be accepted until the close of this hearing and will be made part of the rulemaking record. Any question regarding revisions to the rules should be included with your comments, and any such comment will be addressed as part of the response to comments in the rulemaking record. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept comments on proposed revisions to Rule 8, which was last promulgated in the 2022 session. The rule establishes and adopts ambient air quality standards in West Virginia for carbon monoxide, lead, nitrogen dioxide, ozone, particulate matter, and sulfur dioxide, equivalent to the National Primary and Secondary Ambient Air Quality Standards, established under Section 109 of the Clean Air Act and promulgated by the US EPA under 40 CFR Part 50. This rule also establishes and adopts ambient air monitoring reference methods and equivalent methods promulgated by the US EPA under 40 CFR Part 53. Reference methods are used to determine attainment or non-attainment of the NACS. Revisions to the rule include the annual incorporation by reference of 40 CFR Parts 50 and 53, promulgated by EPA as of June 1, 2023, by updating the IBR date in Section 1.6 and the adoption of standard states in Sections 3.1 and 3.2. The rule numbering and text formats were revised to comport with 153 CSR 1. The floor is now open for comments. As a reminder, please keep your comments on topic and limit them to five minutes. Nicole, has anyone pre-registered to provide comments on proposed Rule 45 CSR 7? If so, please unmute their line and call on them now.
Thanks, Laura. For those who have pre-registered to speak, I will call your name. Please unmute your line. I apologize in advance if I pronounce anyone's name incorrectly. James Coatsen, please unmute your line. Please clearly state your name and indicate if you are representing any group or organization.
My name is James Coatsen. I am Chair of the West Virginia Chapter of Sierra Club. I will keep the comments brief. We certainly support incorporation by reference and updating these federal standards. We would urge DEP to consider even more stringent standards where it is needed to protect public health. I will also add parenthetically that the concept of extending the common period for two to three days after the oral public hearing is a useful one, and I urge DEP to consider that in a future such public hearings. Hearings such as this are important as learning opportunities for all involved, and it would give everyone a chance to clarify and extend any comments that they have. Thank you.
Thank you, James. We are at the end of registered commenters. If you did not pre-register to speak but would like to do so now, please use the raise hand option. There being nothing farther, this public hearing for proposed Rule 45 CSR 8 is concluded. The public hearing for proposed Rule 45 CSR 10 will begin momentarily.
Thank you, Nicole. Is the court reporter ready for the next hearing?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. The virtual public hearing for the proposed legislative rule 45 CSR 10, Control of Air Pollution from the Emission of Sulfur Oxides, will now come to order on the 6th day of July 2023. Oral comments and testimony will be accepted until the close of this hearing and will be made part of the rulemaking record. Any question regarding revisions to the rule should be included with your comments, and any such question will be addressed as part of the response to comments in the rulemaking record. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept comments on proposed revisions to Rule 10, which was last promulgated in the 2000 session. This rule establishes emission standards for sulfur oxides from fuel burning units and sets forth the registration permitting, reporting, testing, record-keeping, and exemption requirements. The rule was being amended in response to the US EPA finding a failure to submit action to address deficiencies identified in the US EPA 2015, findings of substantial inadequacy and SIP call for provisions related to excess emissions during periods of startup shutdown or malfunction, excuse me, or SSM. Revisions to the rule include removing the SSM SIP call provisions in subsection 9.1. Additional revisions include updating the title and series name, clarifying the scope and authority, adding the sunset provision and removing the former rule section, adding or revising the definition section consistent with the SSM SIP call or with other DAQ rules, replacing director with secretary, adding references to state rules associated with federal regulations, removing obsolete language, removing standards for retired power plants, Cammer, Willow Island, Canaw River, Reevesville, Albright, and Phillips-Forn, and adding a provision in subsection 9.2 requiring any owner or operator that cannot comply with the emission limits of this rule during periods of startup and shutdown to request an alternative emission limitation pursuant to 45 CSR 1. The rule numbering and text formats were revised to comport with 153 CSR 1. The floor is now open for comments. As a reminder, please keep your comments on topic and limit them to five minutes. Nicole, has anyone pre-registered to provide comments on proposed Rule 45 CSR 10? If so, please unmute their line and call on them now.
Thanks, Laura. There are no registered commenters. If you did not pre-register to speak but would like to do so now, please use the raise hand option. James Coatsen, please unmute your mic. Clearly state your name and indicate if you are representing any group or organization.
My name is James Coatsen, Chair of the Western Chapter of Sierra Club. I apologize for not having caucuses earlier in my written comments. Just an editorial suggestion in Section 8.3.5b. The word data is plural. A singular number is a datum. And so, in the revised language, I recommend that it be changed from data is available to data are available. Grammar nerd. Sorry. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a comment? Please use the raise hand feature. There being nothing farther, this public hearing for proposed Rule 45 CSR 10 is concluded. The public hearing for proposed Rule 45 CSR 16 will begin momentarily.
Thank you, Nicole. Is the court reporter ready for the next hearing?
Yes.
Thank you. The virtual public hearing for the proposed legislative rule 45 CSR 16, Standards of Performance for New Stationary Sources, will now come to order on the 6th day of July 2023. Oral comments and testimony will be accepted until the close of this hearing and will be made part of the rulemaking record. Any question regarding revisions to the rule should be included with your comments, and any such question will be addressed as part of the response to comments in the rulemaking record. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept comments on proposed revisions to 45 CSR 16. This rule was last promulgated in the 2023 session and establishes and adopts national standards of performance for new stationary sources and other regulatory requirements promulgated by the US EPA pursuant to Section 111b of the Federal Clean Air Act. This rule codifies general procedures and criteria to implement standards of performance for new stationary sources set forth in 40 CFR Part 60. The rule also adopts associated appendices, reference methods, performance specifications, and other test methods which are appended to such standards. Revisions to this rule are necessary to maintain consistency with current federal regulations and for the state to fulfill its responsibilities under the Clean Air Act and enable the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection to continue to be the primary enforcement authority for such national standards promulgated by the US EPA. Revisions to the rule include updating the annual incorporation by reference of the New Source Performance Standards, or NSPS, promulgated by EPA under 40 CFR Part 60 as of June 1, 2023, by updating the IBR dates in subsections 1.6 and 4.1. The rule numbering and text formats were revised to comport with 153 CSR 1. The floor is now open for comments. As a reminder, please keep your comments on topic and limit them to five minutes. Nicole, has anyone pre-registered to provide comments on proposed Rule 45 CSR 16? If so, please unmute their line and call on them now.
Thanks, Laura. For those who have pre-registered to speak, I will call your name. Please unmute your line. I apologize in advance if I pronounce anyone's name incorrectly. Dwayne Nichols, please unmute your line. Please state clearly your name and indicate if you are representing any group or organization.
Thank you. We represent the Mon Valley Clean Air Coalition and simply want to reiterate our support for the tightening, for the modernization, for the updating of the standards. So, without further ado, that's all the comments we have in this category.
Thank you. There are no other registered commenters. If you did not pre-register to speak but would like to do so, please use the raise hand option. There being nothing farther, this public hearing for proposed Rule 45 CSR 16 is concluded. The public hearing for proposed Rule 45 CSR 21 will begin momentarily.
Thank you, Nicole. Is the court reporter ready for the next hearing?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. The virtual public hearing for the proposed legislative rule 45 CSR 21, Control of Air Pollution from the Emission of Volatile Organic Compounds, will now come to order on the 6th day of July 2023. Oral comments and testimony will be accepted until the close of this hearing and will be made part of the rulemaking record. Any question regarding revisions to the rule should be included with your comments, and any such question will be addressed as part of the response to comments in the rulemaking record. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept comments on proposed revisions to Rule 21, which was last promulgated in the 2000 session. This rule establishes reasonably available control technology to control emissions of volatile organic compounds, or VOCs, from sources that manufacture, mix, store, use, or apply materials containing VOC compounds and are in Cabell, Canaw, Putnam, Wayne, and Wood counties. The rule is being amended in response to the US EPA finding a failure to submit action to address deficiencies identified in the US EPA 2015 findings of substantial inadequacy and SIP call for provisions related to excess emissions during periods of startup shutdown and malfunction, or SSM. Revisions to the rule include removing the SSM SIP call provisions in subsection 9.3. Additional revisions include updating the title and series name, clarifying the scope and authority, adding the sunset provision and removing the former rule section, adding or revising the definition section consistent with the SSM SIP call or with other DAQ rules, replacing director with secretary, removing obsolete language, and adding a provision in subsection 3.8 requiring any owner or operator that cannot comply with the emission limits of this rule during periods of startup and shutdown to request an alternative emission limitation pursuant to 45 CSR 1. The rule numbering and text formats were revised to comport with 153 CSR 1. The floor is now open for comments. As a reminder, please keep your comments on topic and limit them to five minutes. Nicole, has anyone pre-registered to provide comments on proposed Rule 21? If so, please unmute their line and call on them now.
Thanks, Laura. For those who have pre-registered to speak, I will call your name. Please unmute your line. I apologize in advance if I pronounce anyone's name incorrectly. Dwayne Nichols, please unmute your line and clearly state your name and indicate if you are representing any group or organization. and clearly state your name and indicate if you're representing any group or organization.
Thank you very much. My name is Dwayne Nichols and I'm representing the Mon Valley Clean Air Coalition. The general comment here that applies, in our belief, to any consideration of the emission of volatile organic compounds is that a consideration needs simultaneously to be given to emissions of particulate matter. Here's the reason. Volatile organic compounds are rarely emitted simply because they preexisted as such in a fuel or in some other material. But rather, they are emitted as a result of some process, combustion, manufacturing, or whatever. And when particulate matter is present, the organic compounds, to a great extent, will adsorb. The word is adsorb, A-D-S-O-R-B, as compared with the word absorb because adsorption is a surface phenomenon. So the particulate matter will carry the organic compounds that would otherwise disperse into the atmosphere. The particulate matter would deposit on surfaces, on automobiles, but most dangerously in the human lungs. And as such, will become a dangerous health hazard. When such organic compounds exist on surfaces, they are also unusually chemically active. I sometimes refer to some of these molecules as free radicals because they have the potential and do so to a great degree over time of reacting and becoming one or another compound, many of which can be quite dangerous. So rather than continue to delve into the exact process by which this happens, I will leave you with the observation that volatile organic compounds are not always well-defined individual compounds that are present at the start of, during the transportation process, and during the deposition. But rather, they're chemically active, and they're reactive and in transition. And these aspects, particularly with regards to air pollution and health effects, need to be understood to the extent that they can now in this day and time. Thanks for this opportunity to go into some detail on volatile organic compounds.
Thank you, Dwayne. There are no other registered commenters. If you did not preregister to speak but would like to do so, please use the raise hand option. There being nothing farther, this public hearing for proposed rule forty-five CSR twenty-one is concluded. The public hearing for proposed rule forty-five CSR thirty-four will begin momentarily.
Thank you, Nicole. Is the court reporter ready for the next hearing?
Yes, I'm ready.
Thank you. The virtual public hearing for the proposed legislative rule forty-five CSR thirty-four, emission standards for hazardous air pollutants, will now come to order on the sixth day of July twenty-twenty-three. Oral comments and testimony will be accepted until the close of this hearing and will be made part of the rulemaking record. Any question regarding revisions to the rule should be included with your comment, and any such question will be addressed as part of the response to comments in the rulemaking record. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept comments on proposed revisions to rule forty-five CSR thirty-four, emission standards for hazardous air pollutants. This rule last promulgated in twenty-twenty-three, incorporates and adopts national emission standards for hazardous air pollutants and other regulatory requirements promulgated by the US EPA pursuant to the Federal Clean Air Act. Promulgation of this rule is necessary for the state to fulfill its responsibilities under the Clean Air Act and will enable the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection to continue to be the primary enforcement authority for such national emission standards promulgated by the US EPA. Revisions to the rule include the annual incorporation by reference of the national emission standards for hazardous air pollutants promulgated by the US EPA under forty CFR parts sixty-one and sixty-three as of June first, twenty-twenty-three. The floor is now open for comments. As a reminder, please keep your comments on topic and limit them to five minutes. Nicole, has anyone preregistered to provide comments on proposed rule thirty-four? If so, please unmute their line and call on them now.
Thanks, Laura. For those who have preregistered to speak, I will call your name. Please unmute your line. I apologize in advance if I pronounce anyone's name incorrectly. Dwayne Nichols, please unmute your line and clearly state your name and indicate if you're representing any group or organization.
Thank you very much. My name is Dwayne Nichols and I'm with the Mon Valley Clean Air Coalition, concerned with air pollution in the upper Mon Valley of West Virginia, as well as Western Pennsylvania, as well as throughout northern parts of our state. We wish simply to state that, as far as we're concerned, radioactive material results in radioactive isotopes that transform their chemical identity as they age. And this involves, in some cases, an actual change of physical state from a solid to a gas. But more than that, it's important to know that radioactive material has no limit in terms of their impact. In other words, there is no level below which we can not worry about the physical, the health, environmental impacts as such materials will volatilize or will deposit, will enter the food chain, and otherwise be health hazards. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on this matter.
Thank you. There are no other registered commenters. If you did not preregister to speak but would like to do so, please use the raised hand option. There being nothing farther, this public hearing for proposed rule forty-five CSR thirty-four is concluded. The public hearing for proposed rule forty-five CSR forty-four will begin momentarily.
Thank you, Nicole. Is the court reporter ready to proceed to the next and final hearing?
Yes.
Thank you. The virtual public hearing for the proposed legislative rule forty-five CSR forty-four, control of greenhouse gas emissions from existing coal-fired electric utility generating units, will now come to order on the sixth day of July twenty-twenty-three. Oral comments and testimony will be accepted until the close of this hearing and will be made part of the rulemaking record. Any question regarding revisions to the rule should be included with your comments, and any such question will be addressed as part of the response to comments in the rulemaking record. The rule is proposed for repeal in its entirety because the adopted federal counterpart regulation, the Affordable Clean Energy, or ACE, rule, was vacated by the DC Circuit on January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and remanded to the US EPA. The rule was promulgated in the twenty-twenty-one session. The floor is now open for comments. As a reminder, please keep your comments on topic and limit them to five minutes. Nicole, has anyone preregistered to provide comments on the proposed repeal of rule forty-four? If so, please unmute their line and call on them now.
Thanks, Laura. For those who have preregistered to speak, I will call your name. Please unmute your line. If we do not hear from you when called upon, we will proceed to the next commenter and call on you again at the end. I apologize in advance if I pronounce anyone's name incorrectly. I will call two names, the person who is commenting, and the next commenter, so they may get ready. The first is James Kotzen. Next in line is Dwayne Nichols. James, please clearly state your name and indicate if you're representing any group or organization.
My name is James Kotzen. I am chapter chair for the West Virginia Sierra Club. We do not necessarily oppose the repeal of this rule. If you may recall, it was first promulgated a few years ago. We were very critical of that rule because it was so inadequate in achieving the needed greenhouse gas reductions. I will bring to your attention an item from today's news. Do you know when the highest temperature ever recorded averaged over planet Earth occurred? The answer is yesterday. The record before that was set the day before. The next highest record was the day before that. We've had three days in a row of record-setting temperatures here on planet Earth, and we need to recognize, as most meteorologists do, that we are approaching a climate crisis. So while we do not oppose the repeal of this rule, we do urge Western DEP to get busy on a rule to regulate greenhouse gas emissions from all fossil fuel-fired power plants, not just coal, and that we need to be very proactive in getting West Virginia ready for the need to reduce those greenhouse gas emissions. We would point out that the reductions in those greenhouse gas emissions would also reduce other air pollutants, such as volatile organic compounds, sulfur dioxide, nitrous oxides, particulate matter, et cetera, and would save lives. The failure to act on greenhouse gas emissions will cost West Virginia lives. US EPA had, a few weeks ago, proposed a new rule to restrict greenhouse gas emissions for all fossil fuel-fired power plants. This would require carbon capture and sequestration in some cases. In other cases, it may require the use of alternative fuels, such as hydrogen, that are not emitting greenhouse gases. It is incumbent upon Western DEP, and we urge DEP to use that proposed rule from EPA as a model, promulgate that rule as quickly as possible, and give West Virginia's fossil fuel electric generating units the clear direction they need to get busy on reducing greenhouse gases. It is urgent. It is imperative that you do so. It is one of the things that our future generations will demand of us. We are running out of time, and we need to move very quickly on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Next in line is Dwayne Nichols. Dwayne, please unmute your mic, clearly state your name, and indicate if you're representing any group or organization.
Thank you very much. My name is Dwayne Nichols, and I'm with the Mon Valley Clean Air Coalition, primarily in the Mon Valley here in northern West Virginia, but also of concern with our entire state and with the region that includes Western Pennsylvania and eastern Ohio. We wish at this time to support the previous comments submitted on behalf of the Sierra Club. We wholeheartedly and fully and strongly endorse these comments and believe that they bring forward perspective that is beyond the importance that we can make in stating our support from them. And in final conclusion, it's regretful that our members and friends will not have the opportunity in this hearing to send in comments also supporting such strong and important comments as these because these proceedings are coming to a close at this moment. And we request and suggest that this and/or public hearings involve the opportunity for the participants, as well as the general public, to be given this chance to comment in writing up to one to two days following a public hearing. That concludes my comments, and I thank you very much for this opportunity to speak on this particular code entry number forty-four, as well as the entire proposed rule consideration here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. There are no other registered commenters. If you did not preregister to speak but would like to do so, please use the raise hand option. Betsy Lawson, please unmute your mic, state your name, and if you are associated with any organization.
My name is Betsy Lawson. I'm not officially associated with any organization. I would just like to endorse what Jim and Dwayne have said. I think what they said is very important, and we have to act now. And I hope that the budget for the DEP includes more inspectors so that these new regulations can be properly enforced. Thank you for this opportunity to talk.
Thank you, Betsy. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a comment? Please use the raise hand feature. There being nothing farther, this public hearing for proposed rule forty-five CSR forty-four is concluded. There are no further public hearings this evening. Thank you very much for your interest, participation, and the public hearings this evening. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night. I'd like to echo Nicole's thanks for everybody's time and attention.
Thank you, Laura.